Counselor Public Hearing will now come into order. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Kamara?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Carrera?
Here.
Reposo?
Yep.
Washington?
Here.
President LaLavi LaBeau?
Here.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Motion to open?
Second. Motion to open the hearing?
Second.
Made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First one is an auto repair shop. Jonathan Manchester, 398 Kennedy Street, Fall River, Mass. DBA Manchester Automotive for a license to operate an auto repair shop at 67 K Street, Lot B-21-4 on the assessor's plan. Are there any proponents wishing to speak? Any pro? If you'll come down to the table, sir. Give your name and address for the record.
Anyone?
Anyone?
Hello, my name is Jonathan Manchester. I'm looking to open up a repair shop at 67 K Street. I've been a mechanic for ten years now, currently working at Henry's Tire in Fall River. And, you know, looking to further my life for my family by opening up my own repair shop. So, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Any opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none?
Motion to close.
Motion to close the hearing made by Counsel Reposo, seconded by Counsel Kilby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn made by Counsel Reposo, seconded by Counsel Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearings adjourned. City Council Committee on Finance will now come into order. Madam Clerk? Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Kamara?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Carrera?
Here.
Reposo?
Yep.
Washington?
Here.
And President LaLavi LaBeau?
Here.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item is citizens' input. First person signed up to speak is Richard Hamilton, 910 Hood Street, and the subject is land property markers. When you're ready, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Hi, fellow counselors. My name is Rick Hamilton. I live in 910 Hood Street, which is on the corner of Hood and Ray Street. Last time I was before you was I was before you for a variance about 22, 24 years ago. Been a while. My father-in-law built a new house up on the corner of Ray and Hood Street back in 1957. There was no school, there was no water tower. He had, it was all dirt road, couple of houses, that was it. Then they built a school and the water tower, like, they put in these big granite markings that go down about three feet. And, um, when he passed away, me and my wife took the house. I get surveyed because I had a neighbor that put up a fence, and I was wondering about the property line. And my father-in-law owned that property too, which is subdivided, but... And, in the process of getting it resurveyed, they took away three feet of my property line on her side and gave me three feet of the city property. So, in the process of trying to get this corrected, little did I know, it was done by Proline Engineering in Swansea, and it was recorded as such, which I found out down the road. So, I was trying to get this property line corrected and unable to do so. So, in the meantime, I still have my frontage, but I got three feet of city property, and I can't seem to get it corrected. Meanwhile, you built a new school, and I've seen numerous engineers up on Ray Street and in my area surveying for the new school. I can't get them to make that one marker official that they put in, I don't know, back in the 60s or 70s or whatever, when they built the school. Um, I'm hoping the city could help me get this three feet back because I want to put up a fence, I want to put up a garage on this property, but I can't do that because the property line is a question on the other side where I want to put the garage. And, it's not like I ca... It's not like when the guy made a mistake of three feet, it's not like he kept the city marker there and gave me three feet somewhere else where I could... It's a private matter. This is now basically our problem instead of my problem because that three feet of city property, which he gave me. He told me, he said, uh, I said, "Just two gentlemen over there, a young one and an older guy." I told him that with that marker that the state put in years ago, it lines up with all the sidewalks and all the streets and everything, makes it nice and square. Quote, "This city has crooked streets."
Twenty seconds, sir.
That's what I got told. So, I'm hoping that I can get someone to come up here and let me show you exactly what's going on up there with this property line, and maybe I can get someone to help me get this three, three feet back and get it squared away. That's my objective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you?
Counselor in seat four?
Do you have your name and address?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
I asked that the clerk send this thing?
It's right on the corner of Ray and Hood Street. My address is actually Hood Street. And, I'll be honest with you, I've had this company, Proline Engineering, do other ex... I've had three properties over the past 35 years in the city.
I know your report's done, but not to engage you, but, well, we'll, I'll ask the city clerk to get in touch with Dion Aguirre, who's a cities engineer.
Okay, would you like to have me leave you a phone number? For my phone numbers you can get?
If they're ready, tell them to leave it with the clerk behind you, please.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have any submitted input?
Yes, we do have one written. Madam President, members of the City Council, I'm writing to enter my support for the resolution that is being presented by the City Council Vice President Michelle Dion to allow $11 million of county ARPA funds for water and sewer projects with an additional request for $9 million of city ARPA funds. ARPA funds were awarded to cities and towns for the overall benefit of the city and city residents. While the use of ARPA funds is restricted for tax savings, it is allowed for water and sewer projects, and as a matter of fact, it is a specific criterion in the ARPA program. Previously, the mayor has stated that he will commit approximately $8 million for water and sewer projects. This is insufficient. For ARPA money to have an effect on the greatest number of people, the use of these funds will allow for a reduction in operating costs for the water and sewer departments and may relate to a decrease or at least a stabilization of the water and sewer rates. At a previous City Council meeting, when questioned why $20 million could not be allocated for water and sewer projects, I believe that I heard that it was the administration's position that they would prefer to bond the money. Such a bond would increase water and sewer costs, and we, the people, can no longer afford increases in taxes and fees. Further, with the instability of the current financial markets and fluctuating interest rates, such a bond could seriously impact the people of Fall River. Such a bond might be considered irresponsible. The previous actions of the majority of this City Council have been contrary to the benefits of the taxpayer and has imposed more burdens on the people of Fall River. It is surprising to see some members of the City Council vote to increase the burdens on the taxpayer. Supporting Michelle Dion's resolution would be a strong action to show that the City Council truly represents the people and not the administration. Please, please remember that you represent the people, and so far, this council has not shown any support for the people and have tailored their actions to the whims of the administration. Respectfully, C.J. Ferry.
Anything further?
That's all we have.
Thank you. Before we go to transfers and appropriations, we have a number of citations to give out. Counsel Carrera?
You have them all?
The top 10 students from Diamond and Durfee.
Need a motion to take the item out of order?
It's not in this committee. Madam Clerk, it's in full council. Do we need to do that? No.
Just present them.
The president should say the same thing, that it's in recognition of graduating top 10, and I'm happy to hear that most of you are going away to college, and I will say, "Come back to the city with your education and give us back the best that you can." So, I will call the names. I have Diamond here. By the way, did anybody here from Diamond go to Skills, the Nationals? Anybody go to Skills? I wanted to know how they made out in Atlanta, but I'll find out. Bashoy? Bashoy, tell me how to pronounce your last name. Mikhail?
Mikhail, yeah.
Mikhail, so I did it right. And what school you going to now?
UMass.
Good for you.
Thank you.
There you go. Congratulations. The next one is Russell McCoom. Russell? Congratulations, Russell. And what school you headed to?
I'm actually from...
Where?
Uh, Waco.
Good for you. Electrician. We need them, McCoy. Soraya Ventis, did I say that right?
She's not here.
Okay, do you know her? You can give it to her? Maybe. Okay, maybe you can't. Charles Magnifico. That means magnificent, Charles. You must be.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, and you can go around to the council. Jennifer Chan? Where you headed?
Georgia.
Good for you. I love your outfit.
Thank you.
You look smashing. You can go around that way, too.
Of course, thank you.
Bryce King. Bryce King. Bryce isn't here. Jacob Fattato? Congratulations, Jacob. Where you headed?
Uh, UMass.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Did he come on? These are Durfee. Did we like sit in different places? I hope we didn't do that. I want all the high school kids to sit together. Sophia Chen?
She's not here.
She's not here. Okay. Timothy Michael Costum. Where are you headed to?
UMass Boston.
UMass Boston. I went to school at Boston. Fun place. Study hard. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Maya Lee Kudo. I love the sneakers with the outfit. It just does it. Where you headed to?
UMass Amherst.
Good for you, Amherst. My daughter went there.
Oh, great.
Stay in Sylvan. It's the studying group. Julia Christine Farrier. Congratulations. Where you headed?
Went to George Washington University.
George Washington University?
Yes.
Washington's a crazy town. I've been watching it on TV.
I know.
Good luck to you, and I like that outfit.
Thank you.
Colin Gilmat? Hachika. Colin Patrick, Gilmat. I like the way you spell Patrick.
Thank you, it's Gaelic.
Your mother must have done that.
Yeah.
She very smart.
Yes.
Very nice.
It's right for jeans.
Where you headed to?
Brown University.
Brown, good for you.
Thank you so much.
Have fun.
I will.
Study hard, come back to us.
Of course.
And Christopher James Panchley. Where you going far away?
Clemson.
Clemson, nice. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. And, you know, none of these students could do what they did and be successful academically. If not for parents, family members, a support system to make sure they get up, they're in school, they study, be on them, and you've done it. Moms and dads and grandpas and grandmas and family, you've really extended it and done it for them. On behalf of the City Council, we always try to give citations to kids that are doing good things, and thank you all for coming. And luckily, the president of the council said, "Let's put you in now so you don't have to stay." However, if you want to stay and watch council meeting, please do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess they didn't want to stay, huh?
I wouldn't either. Mass Exodus.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Could have been a civics lesson.
We should have been civics 101 today.
Nice Georgetown, UMass Doc.
Congratulations.
So good. Got to take a group photo? Maybe we should have done a group photo, huh?
That's all good.
No problem.
That's all good.
My fault.
Congratulations. Well done, Karen.
Good luck.
Very thorough. Good people.
So nice to see, you know, good...
Good citizens.
One of them's already working as an electrician. Good for him.
One of the trades, the way they go.
Make good money. Hi, guys.
Item two is transfers and appropriations. Hassan wants to come down. Attorney Aiken is on vacation this week. And there are items two, three, and four from priority matters.
I don't know if we want to wait for item two, but the Law Department has requested to transfer $97,000 to cover some invoices that came in at year-end. And then we're also requesting to transfer $180,000 from the surplus revenue to cover a item that has now settled. And the final request is to move 1.3 million that is remaining of most of the balance of surplus revenue and moving it to the stabilization fund. So, I don't know who has questions or if there's any questions for any of these items.
Counselor seat six, Counsel Carrera?
We're kind of taking these all together, correct? The 180, I don't have a problem with in transferring the 1.3, but the 97,000, could we just, Attorney Ramsey, get a breakdown of what, what that money was for?
Sure, I'll be glad to give you an overview. Even though these are the bills submitted for the month, two things to keep in mind. One is there's accumulation of a number of bills. A lot of these bills are not just the month, a combination of them getting the bills in because they know of our financial schedule in the city and us also requesting certain bills. So, for example, just, just one by way of example, the last billing date that they had, there was a hearing officer that we used, January of 2022, we just got the bill in. So, I don't want you to think that all these are just, just the month of June. It's not just the month of June. But the reality is, what, the reason why it's over is because there were three significant cases in the city the past fiscal year. The first would be the Purchase and Bank Street. That's the same case that it came down here for, the appropriation to resolve the case. The legal fees in that case were very close to $100,000 when you include the expert fees, which were significant themselves. I don't recall offhand exactly what expert was, but I'm pretty confident it was at least $15,000 for the expert alone. I mean, in that case, it was just volumes and volumes and volumes of discovery. It just, it got expensive quickly, and there was really no way, there was nothing done wrong. It was something that I attempted to handle on my own initially. When I realized it was getting close to the litigation, we hired an expert, and even from there, the expert was like, "We need somebody else on this, someone that could put in the day-to-day hours that I wasn't able to do." So, that, that's one case that was close to $100,000. Another one was...
Attorney Ramsey, just to interrupt. The Bank Street and Purchase, that's the streetscape project that was done?
That's correct.
Where they found granite on the street and had to do more blasting and...
Yes.
Said that the city didn't tell them there was granite, although Granite Street runs up the side, so...
Correct. And so, you know, all cases, settlements, you know, nobody wins on settlements, so to speak.
Right.
They were looking for over $1 million. It settled for $590,000, I believe. The argument was that there was significant ledge underneath there that was hidden that they had no way of knowing until they got into the job. So, I mean, that, that's a pretty big case. That's a pretty big hit to the, the legal bills there. The second case I'd like to note is the McCumber case. That was the lawsuit involved a, where a police officer used a taser. About five to 10 minutes after the taser was used, the person died in the back of the police car. So, that was a case that was resolved on the doorsteps of trial. It was settled, but, you know, you're talking approximately $35,000 in legal fees on that case. And the third one was, the law firm was Clifford &amp; Kenny. What, they've done a number of HR issues this year that were a bit unusual, a lot of involving police issues, but they also were heavily involved in the union negotiations. So, as you're aware, the union negotiations, they were, I think all of them were past their, the timeframe, they're all three-year contracts. It's not something that we anticipate in the future, at least for not another three years. So, those three cases are, they're concluded, they're over, we don't expect them in the future. So, I mean, those alone are over $200,000 if, if without, you know, just knocking out one of those attorney's fees, one of those cases, we wouldn't be before you. So, yes, it is a $97,000 request for an appropriation, but these are really the cases that kind of put us in the hole, so to speak. As to the actual month, the most significant one, if the City Council recalls, we had the, the environmental police officer trial that lasted over a week. It was a defense verdict, so the plaintiff received zero. They were asking for over $2 million, but the bill came in, you know, $26,000. Money well spent. We had a decent-sized bill involved in the Watapa Heights case. I don't know if the City Council is aware of this one. This one's not getting as much press, but it is, it's been ongoing dispute for over 20 years. It's the housing project that was knocked down, and the city has filed and argued, I want to say two, three weeks ago, we argued the motion to dismiss, which is if we are successful, it gets the city out of the lawsuit entirely. But that's a lengthy process. So, you're talking about filing a motion, filing a response, I think we probably also filed the answer to the complaint, the plaintiff's intent to amend the complaint. So, you know, this is something where significant legal fees this past month.
What, what is the Watapa Heights about? Is it that if we build affordable housing, people in the neighborhood would sue the city because their properties would be devalued if they build single-family, then people who want housing, affordable housing would say that we don't have enough?
No, it's extremely complicated, so I won't get into all the details, but in a nutshell, when that housing project was knocked down, there's a state statute that requires that 26 single-family homes get built in its place. I think all the parties, it's not actually owned by the city of Fall River, which is one of the reasons we filed a motion to dismiss. It's, it's owned by the Housing Authority.
Right.
In a nutshell, I believe all the parties involved believe that 26 homes is not cost-effective in this time. Maybe it was a good idea 20 years ago, but it's not anymore. So, the plaintiffs, which is the Law Foundation, I forget exactly what it's called, but...
Conservation Law Foundation.
Yeah, I think that's it. Just drawn a blank on the name exactly, but they filed to requesting that we put 88 units in that area. The city's position with the Housing Authority, we're on the same side on this, is that all the residents there have been duplicated throughout the city. In fact, there's arguments that well in excess of the 88 have been duplicated in other areas throughout the city. So, number one, it, it, there's, there's no cause of action because they've already been produced throughout the city. Number two, there's a statute of limitations defense. Number three, that the city doesn't own the property. Number four, if we're going to do anything, state law requires that 26 single-family homes are going to be built. So, that's it in a nutshell.
And some of these other cases have been hanging around for several years, and they're finally coming...
Yeah, I mean...
Most of them.
In the future...
Not Clifford &amp; Kenny, obviously.
We think for this next fiscal year, we're in better shape. We, the most significant case for the future is going to be the airport road shooting case. Discovery's just getting underway. We haven't spent too much on it just yet. In that case, aside from the complicated nature of it and the, you know, the damages claim is going to be high, when you deal with 20-plus defendants, conflicts arise. So, sometimes you have to hire more than one lawyer. For example, if there's a lawyer, I'm sorry, if there is a police officer who happened to be indicted and may be terminated, and it's a defendant in that lawsuit, you might have to give that defendant its own, his own counsel for conflict reasons. You know, so things like that come up, and sometimes they make a case more expensive than it would normally be.
Is it worth hiring another attorney and not do it? I mean, what, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, we have. I mean, it's, it's, there's no correct answer. I mean, I have to say that Fall River's legal department is kind of bare bones compared to, you know, say, New Bedford or Brockton, but I think it's probably been to Fall River's benefit in the past. You know, if you get hit with big cases and you have to go out and use outside counsel, you know, this past year, I can't even say it was necessarily a bad scenario. Some of these cases are so significant, you probably have to outsource them anyway. But I do see with some of the little things, we're getting more and more public records requests, we're getting more and more open meeting law complaints, we're getting more claims, and I think typically, when the economy's down, we are going to see more claims. So, that's what, one of these, we have hired two new assistant corporations counsel. You know, if we get a new lawsuit, first thing I'm going to do is talk to that attorney, you know, our part-time attorneys, and see if they could handle a week-long trial. Now, we can work with their schedules where, you know, clearly a part-time lawyer, if they do a week-long trial, two-week-long trial, they're going to get significant time off afterward, but if that's something they're willing to do, we'll look, you know, and we think they're competent to handle it. We just don't know what's going to be before us in the future, but, you know, that's one of the reasons we hired the two assistant corporation counsel. We think they will be cost-effective.
Thank you. With that, I yield, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor in seat three, Counsel Dion?
The 97,000, the Bank Street portion of that 97,000, it represents what number?
Zero.
Zero.
I'm saying that's, it's, it's not a part of the month, it's not part of that 97,000, it's just one of the reasons we're 97,000 in the hole for the year. In other words, but for that case, I wouldn't be before you. We'd have all, enough money in, in our regular budget to pay for this 97.
Okay, I guess the reason I'm asking that, if memory serves me correctly, there was a balance left on that capital funding, and it was put aside because of the lawsuit. And if any funds were left, they would be transferred to the Columbia Street project. So, I'm just curious if that money was utilized, if it was not, and if it wasn't, why wasn't it applied to the lawsuit?
My understanding is that that money was transferred out prior to me even starting this job, because it wouldn't have been used for legal fees anyway, but it could have been used to pay for the settlement, and it was zeroed out definitely before the settlement, I think before I even started working for the city. I don't know the logistics behind that. I looked there for that money, it wasn't there.
Yes, because there was specifically, it was specifically, actually, I can go back and find it, that, that money was set aside for, for the, pending the results of that lawsuit to pay that contractor. So, I'd like to know why that was zeroed out and why it wasn't used for that purpose, because that's what it was supposed to be used for. Thank you. On the 1.3 million, how much is there in the surplus revenue? You said that's basically almost the balance of what's left in surplus?
Yes, there's about 30 million, there's about 30,000 that'll be left in the surplus revenue.
Okay. And it's, and it's strictly to build the stabilization fund? It's not, there's no earmark for that money? There's nothing that...
So, after, so after July 15th, which is Friday, we can't use that money until we get our new certification from GOR, which won't happen until, like, the end of October, November. So, essentially, moving into the stabilization fund, if we do need, if something does arise, we would still need to come to you to transfer it out of there anyways. So, this is really just semantics. Either way, we have to ask your permission.
Correct.
So, we're moving it so that we're protecting the city in case we need to...
We just don't know what's going to be before us in the future, but, you know, that's one of the reasons we hired the two assistant corporation counsel, we think they will be cost-effective.
Thank you. With that, I yield, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor in seat three, Counselor Deon.
The $97,000, the Bank Street portion of that $97,000, it represents what number?
Zero.
Zero.
I'm saying that's, it's, it's not a part of the month, it's not part of that $97,000, it's just one of the reasons we're $97,000 in the hole for the year. In other words, but for that case, I wouldn't be before you, we'd have enough money in our regular budget to pay for this $97.
Okay, I guess the reason I'm asking that, if memory serves me correctly, there was a balance left on that capital funding, and it was put aside because of the lawsuit, and if any funds were left, they would be transferred to the Columbia Street project. So I'm just curious if that money was utilized, if it was not, and if it wasn't, why wasn't it applied to the lawsuit?
My understanding is that that money was transferred out prior to me even starting this job, because it wouldn't have been used for legal fees anyway, but it could have been used to pay for the settlement, and it was zeroed out definitely before the settlement, I think before I even started working for the city.
Okay.
I don't know the logistics behind that. I looked there for that money, it wasn't there.
Yes, because there was specifically, it was specifically, actually, I can go back and find it, that, that money was set aside for, for the, pending the results of that lawsuit, to pay that contractor. So I'd like to know why that was zeroed out and why it wasn't used for that purpose, because that's what it was supposed to be used for. Thank you. On the $1.3 million, how much is there in the surplus revenue? You said that's basically almost the balance of what's left in surplus?
Yes, there's about 30 million, there's about $30,000 that'll be left in the surplus revenue.
Okay, and it's, and it's strictly to build the stabilization fund, it's not, there's no earmark for that money, there's nothing that-
So after, so after July 15th, which is Friday, we can't use that money until we get our new certification from GOR, which won't happen until like the end of October, November. So essentially moving into the stabilization fund, if we do need, if something does arise, we would still need to come to you to transfer it out of there anyways. So this is really just semantics. Either way, we have to ask your permission, so-
Correct, correct.
We're moving it so that we are protecting the city in case we need to utilize any of those funds from now until-
Okay, I was just curious if, if there was something pending or something that you thought was coming down that that $1.3 million would be necessary for.
And I can't use it after Friday anyways.
Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council?
No.
Counselor in seat one.
Just in terms of the $180,000, is that a specific settlement, or was that based on the cases as well that you just-
No, that's a specific settlement. This is the one where, when COVID shut everybody down, the claim was initially for an excess of $1 million. There was a force majeure argument that the city had, there's also an equitable claim that the bus company had, so-
Oh, the bus companies.
Yeah, this is, that's all for Amaral Bus Company.
Yep.
And the reason the city's paying it, my understanding is that the transportation funds that were in the school department were transferred back to the city side, knowing that if and when we settled it, we'd use that, that same money.
Gotcha, okay.
And then, I guess, just in terms of, usually we see a lot more year-end transfers coming from various departments, so it's just the law department this year that we've got? So all the other departments are good?
As of right now, I mean, what we've looked at is they're all, they have enough money to cover their expenses.
Yeah, okay.
So.
All right.
Do you want more?
No, no, hi, no. Well, I, I know there's a lot of housekeeping from appropriations with-
There is, yeah, and so we-
So I just don't know-
We've been watching it closely, and I think just with a lot of changes happening and vacancies, a lot of departments were able to cover the, yeah.
Okay, all right, with that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Deon? Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we have in finance.
Motion to adjourn finance.
Second.
Motion adjourned made by Counselor Raposo, seconded by Counselor Kilby, all those in favor?
Aye.
Finance is adjourned. Full council starts at seven. Fall River City Council now come to order. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Kadeem?
Here.
Kamara?
Here.
Deon?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Raposo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
And President Liliby LeBeau?
Here.
Let everybody please rise for a moment in silent prayer.
And remain standing for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk?
The first item before you is the request for the reappointment of Ricky Sahadi as an alternate member to the Board of Appeals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion adopted by Counselor Kamara, seconded by Counselor Pereira, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Still voted.
Item two is the appropriation order, that the sum of $97,392.50 be and the same is hereby transferred to the law expenses from FY21 surplus revenue.
Motion to take the money from the Columbia Street project, the $444,000 to pay the settlement for the Bank Street Purchase Street project.
Second.
If you look at the third quarter, it shows the $444,000 in Columbia Street, and it states, bid for Bank Street was under protest, which delayed contractor ward. Contractor has initiated claims process, which may impact the budget for Columbia Street. So prior to paying the settlement, the money was transferred from Purchase Street to Columbia Street, and there's $444,808,000 in, in that project.
Motion made and seconded, discussion on the motion, Counselor Kamara?
Yeah, I'm not sure we can tell them where to take the money from, we don't, this body doesn't dictate where the money comes from. You can vote against appropriation if you don't like where it's coming from, but I'm not sure we can tell them to take it from a certain line item. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further, Counselor in seat four?
I was going to echo the same comments as Counselor Kamara.
Do you yield?
Can we just point information? What page?
Page 13, under Capital Projects.
Thank you.
And you're on third quarter, FY22, quarter three. Counselor in seat one.
No, I was just going to ask the clerk, has that been done in the past, were we, an amendment to an order?
Have we made an amendment to an, not to an appropriation order?
Okay, I yield.
You're all set.
Counselor in seat six, Counselor Pereira?
If the money is there, I believe that Attorney Rumsey said he wasn't sure, he looked, and the money was gone, so I would say, make a motion to table, give him a chance to look that up, to come back with us with the right information. If you had it in the third quarter, but it got used, you know, in the fourth quarter, and it's not there, then where did that money go? We have to know from the treasurer where that money has gone, and it will give Ms. Alman a chance, unless she has something to say, then I would waive the rules to ask her to come down and clarify it for us.
Motion to waive the rules made by Counselor Pereira?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Raposo, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I don't exactly know, so you're asking to make a transfer from a capital project line and move it in?
So what I'm trying to explain, and I know this was before you got here, so there's no way that you could have had any idea that this existed. When that Purchase Street, Bank Street project was done, they had this money in that account, or that, under that capital project, is that a better way to say it? The money was there, and it was, and it, and it stated then, it was being kept there because they, because of the suit filed by the contractor, and depending on what would be left, they would transfer it to the Columbia Street project. So Attorney Rumsey made the statement that when he went to that account, it was zeroed out.
So again, I can look into that, but the issue is, is if you don't transfer this money, we're going to have a problem, because we only have until Friday to do this transfer, to pay these bills, because Massachusetts requires all of this to be done by July 15th.
Okay.
So either way, I can still look into that account, I mean, the money doesn't just disappear.
Right.
But the, the fact of the matter is, we have to pay these bills, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you yield, Counselor?
I yield.
Do you yield, Counselor? Counselor in seat two, Counselor Kamara?
Yeah, thank you. So that's third quarter of last year's budget, we're going to transfer money, does that budget even exist right now? We're in a different budget, correct?
We're in FY23 now.
She's looking at third quarter '22.
So we're trying to close out, and again, I think, and Attorney Rumsey also stated that the funds that, I think you were speaking of, would go to a settlement part of the agreement, and what he's looking at is paying, these are just the legal fees for that case. So they're kind of two different things, but again, I can look into all that, and we are, we're now, we're reviewing and closing out and going through the process of closing out that fiscal year, but the fact of the matter is, is we still have these year-end bills that we have to pay, and again, there's a process we have to go through, and-
Right, and the money-
Otherwise, I'm coming back to ask for Friday.
Excuse me, Counselor, Counselor Kamara has the floor.
Thank you. So I'm not comfortable going back to funds that were in the budget that we no longer are using last year in third quarter, and knowing that we have to do this and time is of the essence, I think we can look into it and see where the money went. I'm sure it was absorbed in last year's budget and going into this year's budget, and I'm not comfortable tabling it, because it's, again, it's just going to delay everything, so I'm probably fine, I don't think it would be wise to go down that road, and we can find out where this money was and put it in the stabilization account for this year. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadeem?
Yeah, just, I guess, as I was thinking through the process, so maybe the motion to transfer wasn't probably appropriate, because it's already in a capital item, so that, that's actually, FY22 is the transfers we're looking for, so it's still the same fiscal year.
Same fiscal, yeah.
So the, right, so I, I think it's just the statement that Corporation Counsel made, was he was looking for the money, so if we reject it, the money should still be there, because I don't believe there's any work that's been done on Bank Street for Streetscape, so the money should still be there, it's $444,000, so you would just, I don't think you would be looking at that point for a request for a transfer, you'd just be doing a general entry to make sure the charge gets charged directly to that project.
You mean if, if we, if the money's available?
Because it's a separate fund, right.
If the money's available, again, I have to, I don't know if that money, if that, something didn't transfer out of that account for another, I don't know, I have to go back and through, again, I've only been here now two months.
No, I recognize that, but I, there's been, I guess there's been no work on that street, I mean, Bank Street, and everybody would know that there's work being done on Columbia, at least here, right? So there's, there's nothing, so based on that, I would assume that that report is somewhat accurate, I just don't know how much, because I know the question was asked by Counselor in seat three, how much it was, and we didn't get a, a real response, so assuming $444,000 would be enough, then I, I think, you know, maybe it's the motion to transfer from the capital account into the general fund is not appropriate, it should be just a, a motion to reject, and then they have the ability to actually just charge it directly to the capital, they don't need an appropriation or authority from us.
So again, without having-
That's assuming the money's there.
Assuming the money's there, and I don't, I mean, we don't know, and I, I mean, again, we would then could transfer it back to the stabilization fund, once we go analyze that, I would feel more comfortable just leaving the motion as it is.
So is it possible, like, we've got a fund number that's attached to it, could you just go look and see if, munus if it's there, and we can just table this before we make that decision? Because I would agree, I don't, I, I support and I, I agree with the, the motion that was there, the intent of it, and I would continue to support it, but if the money's not there, then I guess we would just need to obviously take a vote to be able to make sure that the bills get paid.
Do you yield, Counselor?
I do, I'm sorry.
Counselor in seat six?
But I think I heard Attorney Rumsey say that the settlement was like $560,000 instead, but what Ms. Alman said is accurate. The $97,000, the money from that is to pay for the legal fee, not for the lawsuit, but just for the legal fee. And if we have to make a decision by the 15th, which is Friday, then we can't hold it up, we can certainly look into that after, but we can't hold up making these payments, according to-
Yeah, and as you know, like-
Mrs. Alman.
We can still review what's left in capital after tonight and make changes and transfers, but we can, and also, anything that's also left, just it becomes a turn back, back for free cash anyways.
If it doesn't get used.
I, I'd make a motion to adopt them.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do you yield, Counselor?
We do. I think, I'm not sure if there was a motion, if there was a second, I'm not sure.
There was a second, we're in discussion.
There was.
Yep. Do you yield?
I yield.
Anything further from the council?
Roll call.
Oh, hold on, can you read the motion, Madam Clerk?
Madam President, just for, just for the record.
Yep.
So, I did second the motion, I'm actually going to vote against it, just because I don't think it requires a transfer, but I am supportive of it coming out of the, that account. I yield.
Can you read the motion?
So I would modify, I would modify the motion to whatever it needs to be, but definitely it needs to be traced, we need to find out what happened, because obviously, it was there for that purpose, and I don't know, and nobody seems to know what happened, why, how $444,000 appeared in Columbia Street, and, and, so, yeah. I would just feel comfortable if we could at least trace it back and find out what the story is, and if the money's available, then the city has more money available.
Roll call.
It would all get transferred back anyways.
Right. But only if it's followed up.
Yeah, but we have to go through a certain set of semantics to legally do things, and this is one of those.
So we have a motion to transfer, can you repeat your motion, Counselor?
Well, I would modify the motion.
We have a motion in front of us with a second, we have to vote on it.
So you have to go with that motion.
All right. Madam, could you read it? Could you say, repeat it for Madam Clerk?
My, my original motion was transfer the money from the $444,000 to, to cover the legal, to cover the settlement expenses out of the Columbia Street capital project, because that was the original intent.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
On the motion, Counselor Kadeem?
No.
Kamara?
No.
Deon?
No.
Kilby?
No.
Pelletier?
No.
Pereira?
No.
Raposo?
No.
Washington?
No.
President Liliby LeBeau?
No.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Second.
Motion adopted by Counselor Kamara, seconded by Counselor Kilby, discussion on the motion?
Can I, can I just make an amendment?
Counselor in seat one?
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion that we adopt the order request pending the review of the capital project to see if there's funding available, and if there is funding available, that that be charged off directly as opposed to utilizing the, the free cash.
Ms. Alman, on item two, those are expenses, didn't he say that that couldn't be used for expenses, but it could be used for item three, which was?
Now we're getting complicated. So I think, I mean, I don't have an issue with going back tomorrow, reviewing the, and if I, taking it, it's got to come from someplace, so I can, whether I transfer, if there is something available in capital, I can review that, and if you're authorizing that, then we would do that. If there's not, then I'm going to have to take it out of surplus revenue to pay the bills, so I think that's what you're saying.
Right.
And I don't have a problem looking for it.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that she has coverage, in case it's not there, that she can pay the bills, that's all.
Is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
On the amendment, any discussion? Do you need a roll call on the amendment, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Can we, can you repeat the amendment?
We have to deal with the, we have a motion by Counselor Kamara, second by me, we have to deal with that.
No, we do with the amendment first.
Yes, but it's amended, it's amended first.
Can we, read the amendment again? What's that?
Yeah, so I would authorize the order to go through transferring the free cash into the general fund with, so prior to the review of the capital project for Bank Street, and what was it, Bank Street and Columbia?
Columbia is the one that's left, Bank Columbia.
Right, so if there's funding left, that's where she would charge, and then obviously the transfer would still go through, but it would just fall through free cash, and then obviously that would get certified in October, that's all.
So it would be a motion to adopt pending the review of the funds in the Bank Street Columbia project?
It was originally Bank Street Purchase, transferred to Bank Street Columbia Square.
It's under Bank Street Columbia Square. Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
And do you need a roll call on the amendment?
Question.
Counselor?
I don't want to jeopardize the July 15th deadline, you can have enough time to review it by then, tomorrow's Wednesday.
I'm going to look at a balance sheet, see if it's available, and if it's not there, then I'm going to make the decision to transfer it from surplus revenue and look further I'm gonna look at a balance sheet, see if it's available. And if it's not there, then I'm gonna make the decision to transfer it from surplus revenue and look further into it.
So, you can, you'll...
I think that's fair, right? I mean...
That works for me. As long as you tell me you can look at the balance sheet and decide on one day, and you can get it done, it's fine.
And if it's, if there's, needs further review, then I'm just gonna take it from surplus revenue and look at it further.
A roll call, Madam Clerk? Or do you need a roll call on the amendment?
Do you want to adopt pending, excuse me, adopt as amended?
Yes. So, motion to adopt as amended?
So, we're not gonna vote on the amendment? Okay.
You want a motion to adopt as amended?
Doesn't matter.
Well, we, we already voted on the amendment.
No.
That's what I'm saying. So...
On the amendment, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Kamara?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Raposo?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
President La Libe Lebeau?
Yes.
Motion to adopt as amended.
Motion to adopt as amendment made by Counselor Kadim?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Dion. Discussion, Madam Clerk?
To adopt the order as amended, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Kamara?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Raposo?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
President La Libe Lebeau?
Yes.
Item three, that the sum of one hundred eighty thousand dollars be in the same as hereby transferred to the law expenses from FY twenty-one surplus revenue.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Raposo, seconded by Counselor Washington. Any discussion? Do you need a roll call, Madam Clerk?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item four, that the sum of one million, three hundred thousand dollars be in the same as hereby transferred to the stabilization fund from the FY twenty-one surplus revenue.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Raposo, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
The Committee on Public Safety, at a meeting held on June twenty-eighth, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying resolution be granted leave to withdraw. This resolution regarded the noise generated from the coin-operated car wash at twelve twenty-five Dwelly Street.
Motion so made.
Roll call.
Motion grant leave to withdraw made by Counselor Raposo. Is there a second? We have counselors that would like to speak. Counselor in seat six.
Yeah, I just feel bad to give this leave to withdraw because this gentleman that lives near there has had a heck of a problem with that gas station all the time. And I'd like to know if there were any other suggestions during the meeting of public safety, and maybe, I applaud Counselor Pelletier for putting that in. I mean, I've called the police several times when the gentleman has called me. Is there nothing that we can do? Should it go to legal? I'm not sure. I'd yield to Counselor Pelletier, who was at Public Safety, to find out exactly what happened.
Counselor Kamara?
Yeah, I chaired the meeting, and I commend the council for putting the resolution in as well. I would want to suggest it to my colleagues at the meeting to give a leave to withdraw, simply because the man said he was gonna take away their vacuum machines, and hopefully, that would help. Other than that, we can't tell this other individual when his hours of operation are because we don't have any jurisdiction over that unless we grant him a license and we bring it to the ordinance committee and create one for this car wash and all the others. So, if, I'm not against leaving it in the committee, but it's, it's not, at that point, I don't think it's a public safety issue. I think it needs to go to the ordinance committee. That's why I said give a leave to withdraw. And if the problem persists, then we'll refer it to another committee that we can just grant and do what we need to do to put the regulations and restrictions that need to be there. If not, we're just gonna have another meeting there. The same people are gonna come down with the same complaints. Nothing gets resolved. And I think my colleague, Counselor Pelletier, to file this resolution, he wants to see it resolved. We all do. But I don't know if Public Safety is the place to continue these meetings when we're just gonna, from that committee, we're gonna make a recommendation to another committee to do what needs to be done to really put this to bed. That's why I said give a leave to withdraw. We, we hope that this will work. What we're gonna do with the owner, with the manager of the company said he would do, hopefully, it'll work. I don't know if he's received any complaints as of then or not, but let's see what happens. And if it could, the problem persists, then we need to refer it to the ordinance committee and have a license put in place and talk about what else we, what steps we need to go further. That was my rationale to give this item leave to withdraw in that committee. But if you want to leave it there and have another Public Safety meeting, and then we can't do nothing else there, we're just gonna have to send it to another committee to draw up a license. With that, I yield. Doesn't matter to me.
Counselor in seat five?
Thank you. You know, as far as I'm concerned, I didn't think he was trying to help the situation. When he says, I'm not gonna put the quarters in the machines so they won't use the service that they get. And then, I says, well, why don't you get a chain? Oh, don't wanna get a chain. Really? Don't wanna get a chain? It's like it's too much money? I even said, I'll pay for the bowls. You close down. Wants to close at ten? You don't wanna put the money, the money in the machines for eight o'clock? I mean, you know, give these people a break. That's the problem that I got. He's not cooperating. So, if he's serious, let him close at ten. That's all. It would stop everything.
I agree.
But the chain really got me going.
I know.
So, that's, so I'm not gonna give it leave to withdraw. And I yield with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat three?
Yeah, as the conversation ensued that day, both, the people, the complainants, both said that their issue was a noise issue. Their issue was the dryer, the dryer, the vacuum closest to the house. He agreed that he would shut that vacuum down every day, nine o'clock?
Ten.
Ten o'clock, at ten o'clock, and they, nobody would be able to operate that vacuum until the next day. They were amicable to that. They said that was their biggest issue, was the noise, that they didn't have an issue with people going in and putting a car through the car wash. That's not what's disturbing them, that that seemed to be their biggest issue. They were comfortable with, if he would do that and follow through with that and said, if there was a problem, they would come back and let us know there was a problem. It, just as it rolled out, it just seemed like the crux of the matter was the noise issues. And as long as they were comfortable with the noise level and that problem didn't exist, it gave us the impression that, that that would be suitable for everyone.
Does anyone know if he shut it down at ten o'clock?
Oh, I'm sure he did. If not, he told you, would give his word.
No. We had Attorney Hawiak here, who said, basically, above and beyond the noise ordinance, we had no jurisdiction. The police department was here, stated they'd gone by several times. They, they hadn't seen any issues. Of course, people are aware of the fact that the police are paying more attention. So, that's keeping some of the ones, I guess, that went with the boom boxes and whatever, at bay. But as Counselor in seat two stated, I mean, they were told to, any problems, immediately bring it back. Let us know, and we would reopen it. So, with that, I yield.
Anything further, Counselor in seat five?
Yeah, just a note. I happened to go vacuum my car today at Sunny's on the avenue. I had about eight cars there. And one guy had the music, cranked up, cleaning his car. It happens all the time.
Yes.
And that's what they do. Nice cars, boom box, the whole thing. Me, I'm just busy running around and listening to the music, try to get the hell out of there, you know? But it's gonna happen. It's gonna happen again. Let them close at night. Too late for noise. I yield.
To close at night, though, Counselor, he, that wouldn't necessarily be the Public Safety Committee.
Say that again?
It wouldn't necessarily be the, the work of the Public Safety Committee for him to close at a certain time at night.
Well, then send it to ordinance.
Exactly.
Ordinance. Counselor in seat two?
That's my point in getting out of that committee, so that when it happens again, we can send it to the right committee to make sure that we're gonna tell them what to do. We asked him if you cooperate. He said he would. Hopefully, he does. If he doesn't, and if he can't control the noise, then we're gonna make him do it, but that committee's not gonna be able to do it. We'll have a meeting only to refer it to another committee to force him to do it. That's why I said give a leave to withdraw. It doesn't belong in that committee anymore. The committee did its job, did its work. We made him come to some type of an agreement. I don't think it should end either, because I agree with you. The noise is gonna continue. Until we figure out how it is we can stop them with some teeth in it, then that committee's pretty much, you know, run its course, as far as I can see. Unless you think of something we can do with that committee to force them to do something, and it's not. We need to put a license in place, license it and regulate the hours of operation and everything else. You can't do that in the Public Safety Committee. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Anything further? Counselor in seat five?
Oh, I'd like to make the motion and send it to ordinance. See if we can squeeze something out of there.
Make a motion to send it to ordinance?
I'll second that.
Motion to send this, refer to the Committee on Ordinance made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Any discussion?
Madam President, I'll withdraw my original motion. Grant leave to withdraw.
It didn't have a second.
Okay. Well, we didn't even get to that point, so...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Have the top ten students for BMC Durfee High School.
Can we take six, seven, eight, nine, and ten together?
Motion to take items six through ten together?
Second.
Made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Vice President Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Items six through ten, Madam Clerk?
Six is the Durfee top ten students. We have seven, which is the Diamond Regional Vocational Technical High School top ten students. We have the Atlantis Charter High School top ten students, Bishop Connolly High School top ten, and Argosy Collegiate Charter School top ten students.
Motion to adopt six through ten?
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Vice President Dion, seconded by Counselor Raposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Item eleven is the order granting permission to Jonathan Manchester Doing Businesses Manchester Automotive at sixty-seven K Street.
So moved.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Pereira?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Raposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Have the police chiefs report.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Raposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Auto-repair shop license renewals?
Motion.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Raposo?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Washington. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Have a claim?
Motion to refer to Corporation Counsel.
Second.
Motion to refer to Corporation Counsel made by Counselor Raposo, seconded by Counselor Vice President Dion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Have a thank you card from the Pelletier family?
Motion to accept, place on file.
Second.
Motion accept and place on file made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Raposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Motion to take items sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen after reading together, made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Clerk?
We have minutes of the Committee on Finance, held on June fourteen, public hearings held on June twenty-eighth, and the Committee on Finance held on June twenty-eight.
Motion.
Motion approved made by Counselor Raposo?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pereira. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
The Traffic Commission recommending amendments to the ordinances?
Motion to refer to traffic, I mean, to ordinance?
Motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinance made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Raposo. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted.
Whereas the city of Fall River has been federally mandated to take on numerous projects directly related to the combined sewer overflow project, which has and continues to financially burden the taxpayers of this community with virtually no financial relief. And whereas many taxpayers are struggling to meet the demands of increased taxes and water and sewer rates, a crippling cost of living increase, and now, for the first time, the debt exclusion for the new high school. And whereas water and sewer infrastructure is a proper American Rescue Plan Act funding category and has a direct impact on the health and welfare of our residents, which is also in ARPA funding category. And whereas ARPA funds must be obligated by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and spent by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, and the aforementioned mandates must be completed in two thousand twenty-five, well within the time limit for ARPA funding. And whereas utilizing ARPA funding would provide relief to the taxpayers by reducing water and sewer rates in the future, now therefore be a resolve that the City Council vote to obligate eleven million dollars of Bristol County ARPA funding for water and sewer infrastructure mandates, and be a further resolve that the City Council send a letter to the administration requesting they obligate nine million dollars in ARPA funding to water and sewer infrastructure mandates to help ease the financial burden on our taxpayers and continue to ensure our water is always delivered and maintained for the safety of our residents.
Is there a motion?
Motion to refer to finance?
Motion to refer to the Committee on Finance made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Raposo. Any discussion? Counselor in seat one?
Yeah, just, I'm not opposed to this. I mean, I've said this a number of times, that I support more money going to water and sewer. I think that's the only way truly to really kind of impact the taxpayers through the, you know, the rate increases, things of that nature. However, I just think that the administration should be here for the discussion. I know the city administrator is on vacation, so I just want to obviously give him the opportunity to be here. And I know Mr., I'm not sure if Mr. Ferlin was here for the resolution or what it was, but he should be invited as well for, for a lengthy conversation about, you know, the use of, of the ARPA monies for water and sewer projects.
Agreed.
I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Pereira?
I don't have a problem with it going to finance, but to be honest with you, I called to ask about this. What would it be if we were gonna spend kind of twenty million dollars? What would it be on the water rate? And I was told that on the, this, the water bill that we pay, the CSO money that we're paying, the consigned sewer, it would be twenty-five cents savings. So, for twenty-five cents. And, you know, I checked on, if you're gonna do all these projects, how long is it gonna take to do all these projects? And with all these projects with federal money, you need to get your bids, put out, you know, your specs, get your bids, and do all of that. Are we gonna be able to do all these projects with that? Also, I think it would be imperative for Mr. Ferlin to tell us the grant money that we've received, because we've received like three, I believe, three grants overdoing our stuff. So, I think it's a perfect place to go to finance to really have a discussion about it. Nobody likes to pay for the CSO. I certainly don't. And I think that it was shoved down our throats as a mandate, and we're stuck with that. And, you know, I think it's worth going to finance for discussion. With that, I yield.
Point of clarification?
Counselor in seat two?
Yeah. Was that twenty-five cent savings weekly, monthly, or for every one hundred thousand?
For your bill, for your quarterly bill that you got.
Twenty-five cents less on the bill?
Yeah, twenty-five cents on the bill that you got. I don't know. But that's why it's going to finance. I think it's good.
I don't think it's twenty-five cents on the bill. On a monthly bill, twenty-five cents, that's it? No.
It was something twenty-five cents.
For one hundred thousand cubic inches of water coming in, right?
What is it? Well, it's gonna finance. I will hear.
I just wanted to make sure.
But the savings wasn't, it really wasn't a heck of a lot of savings, like I thought it would be.
Can I make a motion to waive the rules and have Mr. Ferlin come down?
No, 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 no.
Because he can address this. It's gonna finance. He'll talk about it there.
Yeah.
Do you yield, Counselor?
I do. Thank you.
Counselor in seat three, the sponsor of the resolution.
Yeah, in terms of the federal mandates, we have federal mandates that have to be completed by two thousand twenty-five. We don't have an option on saying, no, sorry, don't have time to put out bids. Oops, sorry, we can't, we have to do it. They're, we're mandated, and they have to be completed by two thousand twenty-five. I don't know personally what the cent or dollar amount is. I do know that if we don't bond for twenty million, I think the savings is more significant than twenty-five cents. You know, why do we want to put another twenty million dollars on the backs of the taxpayers if we don't have to? We're always saying, oh, the federal government needs to help us with our CSO. The federal government needs to give us money. Well, guess what? The federal government gave us money, and I think we need to utilize it to the best of our ability and to try to help the residents of the city. I feel bad that Mr. Ferlin's here and can't contribute to this, but I'm sure he will be here the night that it goes to finance. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. And I did reach out to Mayor Coogan because this was just put on as an item after the agenda, after we got the licenses as well. And I do agree with it going to finance, because it hasn't given anybody a chance to look into it. It just went on yesterday. And he has not made any determinations about that second batch of ARPA funds yet. That was his, the conversation that we had today. And I do think it'd be better if the administration's here, as well as Mr. Ferlin, to explain what the twenty million dollars will pay for, what, what savings that would be, and that he'd be able to do it in that timeline. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim?
No, I was just gonna make the same statement with regard to the twenty-five cents. I think that's significantly low. I, I thought it was like, you know, a penny would generate anywhere from like thirty to sixty thousand dollars in revenue. So, just based on that, it's gonna be a lot more than twenty-five cents for the impact of the repair. So, I'm comfortable with sending it to finance and just having that discussion.
Thank you. You yield, Counselor?
I do.
Counselor in seat two, Counselor Kamara?
Yeah, no, look, I'm perfectly fine to do the finance. I, I, I'm not against it. I think spending it that way is perfectly fine with me. The only thing I do want to point out, though, and my colleague in seat three said that, you know, the federal government's giving this grants and stuff, let me tell you. The federal government has abandoned cities like Fall River when it comes to infrastructure projects like this. We did nothing wrong in this community, and we have to tackle the CSO project because we were court-mandated to do it. We've been doing, we've been paying for it. Flint, Michigan, got their entire infrastructure taken care of for free. So, we could've got to that.